Okay.
All right. All right, it is seven o'clock. Today is Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, seven P M. We will call this Bristol Town Council Work Session Two Order. We will start off with the plug in allegiance. Great, well, this night.
I believe in the United States of America and the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call. Start to my left, Doug DeSmith.
Here.
Dean Runford.
Here.
Kathy Burke.
Here.
Greg DeHolsky.
Here.
And John Peachy's here. Um, town manager, Mike Yoder.
Here.
Legal counsel, Alex Bowman.
Here.
Town market, so you pray.
Here.
Fire chief, Nick Hans.
Really?
And deputy clerk treasurer, Jill Schwartz. Hey, good evening all. Everybody a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
It is a brief one. We should be done in like ten minutes, right?
Can I make a motion that we get rid of number five?
No.
Sorry, just had to try.
Okay, the agenda will stand as published. Okay, we'll get right into it. Make it away.
Hey, we were getting our first look at our new development standards tonight. We have Robert here. I'm not sure if I told.
If the town wanted to say, no, we want to change that a little bit, we're going to say that the fence can't be, the fence could be up to eight feet, but it has to be white vinyl.
Right.
So we can, we can take a standard that maybe is a little bit looser on the county side, and we can make it a little bit more stringent for our approvals, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Yes, it's outlining what you want to change in the county ordinance.
Okay.
For your area, your controllable uh town limits.
Okay.
So yes, a fence, uh building setback, um parking requirements.
Lighting.
Lighting, landscaping.
Yep.
Any of that stuff.
The height of a building.
Correct. We can control that in this ordinance by saying, we would prefer to do, we want to regulate it to such an eight foot high fence, two or three story building as opposed to a three or four, whatever it may be, but you could limit, you could change the wording of, not change the wording of the ordinance, but say that for this controlled area, this overlay area.
Yeah.
You have control to say that, no, we don't agree with the county ordinance. We have these rules that apply.
Right, we want to, we either want to loosen up the requirements or tighten them up.
Tighten them up.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So, and I think in most cases as we go through this, I think the goal is to somewhat tighten them up in most cases.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that thought, taking another step, I understand this process, the county commissioners will be approving this, adopting this as well, so it becomes part of the county ordinance. Which, Ken, doesn't that mean that county code enforcement helps us enforce these standards?
It should. Um, they should be, you should be able to access that now. But you're right, I mean, you're exact, you're exactly right. So it has to, because this is an overlay district within the town, and therefore made a part of the county development standard ordinance. So it has to go through that process, I believe, and that's the plan.
Plan commission.
Yeah.
And.
Okay.
And ultimately, you know, going through that process, the town, the town would have, you know, this is what we want, goes through that process. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it comes back to you ultimately. After, after it goes through that ordinance revision, which has to go plan commission, county.
Yeah.
For example, we were talking about fences. I'm not so sure that we have a fencing ordinance in Bristol. I've always thought it was the county is what we followed. Uh, I think there are several things that we follow that is county.
Yeah, there.
And that we don't, but it's like uh setback fence setbacks and.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like that. I don't think Bristol has ever done an ordinance.
You.
For that, I'm, I'm for sure. So we go by county standards.
Basically, you know, via this um procedure, you could.
Yes.
But you're right. I mean, if somebody, if somebody wants to build a fence in the Bristol, in the town of Bristol, if the county has an ordinance that stipulates that, it follows that ordinance unless you adopt something.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So it, I think it helps, well, I know it helps, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, but I think it helps us get our ordinances through the county now, because in the past, the county had theirs, and then we have ours, and the two never talked.
Correct.
So this kind of fixes that, that connection between what the town desires and what the county desires.
So, and the thing, the thing about this particular activity is it is specific to um the development standard ordinance that is adopted at the county level.
Yeah.
And they periodically update it.
Yeah.
But, so, you know, nuisance and other things like that would be handled differently.
Right.
Because it's not a part of zoning.
Yeah.
Kind of buildings.
Yeah.
So.
And, and the reason we're following the county is because we don't have a plan commission for the county of Bristol.
Yeah.
So that we're, we're following the counties, so.
So.
Or we don't have an ordinance.
To that point, as you said, you think the county would approve it, and then it would come to the town to say, yes, we agree to do it.
I'm not sure if that's the exact procedure or not, but I know because it is a county ordinance, or you're asking to conduct a, basically an amendment that is specific to your jurisdiction. It still has to go through that.
Yeah.
County plant commission, county, county, county commission.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like, it would be similar to to someone in the county, let's say one of the township, somebody in the township has a desire to be annexed into Bristol. They would first go to the county because that's where they reside, and they would request annexation, and then it would come to the town for final approval, correct? Because.
Actually, I don't think so. I think it comes, it comes right to the town.
Oh, it comes right to the town, okay. The issue of annexation would. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
I think, I think the only reason.
Rezoning then.
I, I think the only reason that this engages with the, with the county is you don't have plans.
Right, so.
You are, you are, by interlocal agreement, the county plant commission does your planning.
Okay. Okay. So then that, then annexation is probably obviously a bad.
Um, yeah.
Example, but rezoning, rezoning would go through the county first.
Yeah.
And then come to the town for final approval. Okay, so that's, that's, that would be a good example, okay.
Yeah, the other reason, you know, and I'm not trying to. But the other, the other reason that you, that this is a good idea for you is that um your ability um to, because you depend upon a certain group of services that are made available to you through the planning department and the building department, and so on and so forth, for you to adopt a set of standards that are specific to Bristol. They, you know, it's not like a wholesale, you're not developing a complete use of standards, you're basically saying, we're okay with everything in the county's uh development um standard ordinance plus this.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's basically what it is.
Okay.
Kind of a augmentation that's specific to where the council views the town and how it develops.
Okay.
Yeah, to that, to that extent, you, this is kind of that overlay of the, the word document, and so it can correct something that you don't want to see in the town. And we're still working through the wording of how all that, you know, this negates this line, this negates that line, but the idea of everything we're proposing is here tonight, so.
Okay, perfect.
So this is the rough draft.
Sorry to derail.
No, you're fine, babe.
I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
That we all understood, anybody online watching, if they had questions on what the process was, it would be helpful.
Sure, sure.
Okay. So.
So, uh, we go into the one fifty-eight oh four of the ordinance, obviously that is the special purpose and overlay districts. Um, we've got the town limits there, and we've got maps that will also be included with this ordinance, and I've got some low maps of that, and I think the PDFs are also included with this. Um, but uh we've got, obviously, the town, the defiable town limits, everything has been annexed at this point, those maps will get updated as town can be used to grow.
Okay.
Um, and that would uh see that, but then we break it down to what is the zoning inside the town limits, and we're saying that there's no agricultural zoning within the town limits allowed, so that would, I, I don't know, recall if that is actually in the county ordinance, if there's agriculture allowed within town limits. But we're specifically saying the town would prefer there is no agriculture allowed in there. Um, same for the R one, what is allowed and what isn't allowed, as opposed to all the checkboxes in the big county ordinance for R one, R two special uses. We're saying, yes, that's allowed, but manufactured homes aren't allowed, or smoke shops, tattoo parlors, uh marijuana facilities, if that were ever to be allowed, we're just designating these as items that the town chooses not to have within its town limits.
Okay.
Does that mean they can't do any farming in town, inside the town limits?
No, it's just no A one zone land.
Okay, so they can still farm?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the livestock.
Right, but I mean.
Yeah.
A, corn, beans, all that kind of stuff, they can still do, the ones that are still inside town.
Should be able to.
Well, that, that language there.
Yeah.
Agriculture is not a permitted use, but then on the one, how are we defining, how is agriculture defined in the, in the ordinance?
Well, and I think that's, how do we want to word that is.
Primary concern is livestock.
Is livestock? Yes, so we could word that, that, you know, agricultural farming is still allowed, but livestock, and again, I'm not sure all the exact terminology.
Yeah.
We get there, but I think we can include that, that the target is to not allow livestock.
County allows farming on M one and M two.
Yeah.
And, and that, so that's probably something that needs to be considered, because you do have a tremendous amount of land that is currently zoned M one, or that's been annexed and is still being farmed.
Yeah.
And uh.
Lots of it.
And, and so that is, that needs to be considered as part of this.
Yeah.
Until it converts. I don't know exactly, uh, I mean, you can't take that right, that right away. I think, I think what this is kind of more leading to is uh new land uses can't be agricultural.
Okay.
So. Yeah, it would be like grandfather doing, tell such a time that a new use or uh instruction or something planned happens that you could say, okay, we have to, we're now kicking in these, these guidelines.
And changing in that zoning.
So if someone wanted to come in and say, I've got a four hundred acre tract that's currently zoned M one, I want to downgrade it to A one, then that would be a no.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it basically, um, the A one zone just has no place within the town.
Okay.
So, I mean, it just, it's not, it's not what the town's about, but those existing uses, there'd be no reason to change.
Right.
You know, because, you know, like in this, in this scenario, I think, well, this, what's being contemplated, if it, if it's R one, and it's in the town, um, you can't farm.
Yeah.
Can't be done.
Okay.
In gardens, but you can't farm.
Yeah.
Okay.
But let's, let's think about that language carefully, because even if, if we would annex A one land, we want that to immediately become something else, even within the annexation process we can do, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a little, you get kind of cart before the horse issues a little bit, because it's. It, it's difficult. It'd be difficult for you to rezone land not within the town until the annexation occurs.
If you do something stringent upon the rezone, it will be.
I, I think you could, you could have a separate agreement kind of thing, and say, um, if you're going to, particularly with a voluntary annexation.
So we might want some language that would allow roe crop farming in A, in, in M zones, or B zones, maybe even. Want to stay away from the livestock, because we don't want forty thousand bird or.
But don't we have an ordinance that says you can't have any fire mantles inside town limits?
Yeah.
There is right now, so we need to ensure that that aligns with this. Maybe that language moves from our code to, to this, um, or we just duplicate it.
Two separate, two separate tools in the toolkit, as far as the, the town's ordinance on the prohibition of raising animals, and then the zoning prohibition on raising animals, so I would think the two can, the two can coexist um without, without issue. So I'd say, if you can incorporate it into the zone, keep both.
As long as they don't contradict each other.
Correct.
So we just got to be sure the wording is the same.
Correct.
But.
Yeah.
Counterdate each other.
Both exercises of the police power.
So like, with this, with this particular classification, R one, single family district can conduct an agricultural operation in R one, even if you're a county.
Yeah.
Other than guarding for your own use. And s- and I think commissioners just, just confirmed that, you know, with the chicken guy down.
Yeah, that's right. Well.
Yeah.
He was looking to be resold.
Oh.
Yeah, they did. Yes, what you're saying. So, uh, uh, let's just talk about this question right now, because I did notice that you have, I don't think we're allowing smoke shops, tattoo parlors, or marijuana sales anywhere in town. We are.
Right.
Totally prohibiting that.
So.
We can legally do that, if we can't, we don't have to offer it to one zone?
Well, we've, since the draft version, we've kind of condensed this so that we've got all of these as if over encompassing for all zones.
All zones.
So we, we've since restructured this a little bit to make it a little more clear. We were kind of just going through and highlighting, okay, we can do this here, here, in this draft version, and.
So if somebody wanted to do that, they'd have to go through a B Z A process.
Of a variance career.
Yeah, because if you look at all these zonings on here, they all have that same sentence.
Yeah.
Each one of them says the same exact thing or not permitted.
Now, in overlaying, does the town get a say in the B Z A process? Or does that handle it, the county, separate?
Well, you know, that's a good question. Um, uh, and, and I don't really know the answer to that, you know, because I don't recall going through that process myself in, in a scenario where.
And this is totally new to the county, and we're the first town to be bringing this to the county.
Yeah.
And, um, so we're the experimental base.
You know, what Kathy's talking about is, when I first looked at this with the guys, um, I think it was yesterday, we talked about restructuring this so that, um, you know, we spend more time, like, okay, like, smoke shops, we know you don't want smoke shops. You know, you don't necessarily are interested in tattoo parlors or marijuana, so these are otherwise. So maybe, uh, we work with Alex where we add a section to this overlay that basically says these land uses are prohibited.
Right.
Um, these are the, not, the, not, the unpermitted uses. And, uh, and so, doesn't matter what zoning classification you're in, they're just not going to happen.
Right.
And, uh, I think it's pretty important to state that, you know, if, if council doesn't agree with those land uses, which seems important, doesn't matter what district you're in.
Yeah.
So. So I think, uh, you know, of course, there's going to be, you know, a, a couple iterations of this, and one is uh, sitting down with Alex, going through line by line and saying, you know, we want to make sure that we're not put in a council in position where somebody can challenge you on something small.
Yeah.
Or even more significant.
Okay. And we can do that. To that point, though, um, Mike, again, that's, that's, the, the, the variance process is probably something too that should be baked into the development ordinance, so that, um, you know, the B Z A probably wouldn't be inclined to give the council a vote, but at the very least would weigh the council's opinion heavily in any decision on a variance. And that provides some, you know, a notice opportunity, and, and maybe even though, you know, I don't know, maybe make it as part of the variance procedure under the, the overlay that the council has to, the commissioner has to come before the council, and the council renders a a quite a yea or nay, but an up vote or down vote, and then that gets presented to the B Z A.
That's possible, that would be, I'd love it to just stay here, just not involve the county B Z A. They may be disinclined to follow our.
They may, they may, but, you know, the overlay, to, to the county's development or, uh, credit, this, this overlay district is supposed to, to provide that type of flexibility, so that there's a unified development, but then each municipality has the opportunity to control its own destiny without having fifteen plan commissions among all the different municipalities, so. Maybe there is an interest at the B Z A level to have that built into the overlay, but.
That'd be a really good question to ask. Because, you know, years ago, when we, you worked with the, uh, Rusa, we, we, uh, worked on a set of development standards for them, and we took it to the county planning staff, and said, we have no way to improve this. And so it was adopted as part of their comprehensive plan. But one of the things that did happen, uh, as a result of that, is the town established a technical review committee, included, you know, one or two council members, town manager, others, and you, you really couldn't progress forward at the county level unless you had communication from the technical, technical review committee that says, we're okay with this, or not okay with this, or whatever it might be. Uh, you had to have some kind of official communication from the review committee before it could go. So maybe that's something that we could try to apply here in Bristol, too. We're, we're kind of, we're kind of somehow, kind of almost doing that right now, because your, your current, your town staff, your public works folks, uh, they're interested in every land use development that happens in town. So they're looking at it, uh, Mike's looking at it, a lot of times it gets kicked at us to do a technical review before it goes, you know, through the approval process. One of the things I don't know, Mike, whether it's ever been officially established is do we hold up the building permit? If we don't get what, what, you know, what the town standard requires.
Yeah, I don't. At the moment, if the planning staff asks for our input, they will not issue a building permit till we get a sign off. They have a sign off from us.
So I wonder if that could be made a part of this. You know, I, I believe that is the way it still is in Rusa. After we, and we, and we didn't adopt an ordinance, we adopted, we adopted a uh comprehensive plan, and then they adopted the town's comprehensive plan as an amendment to theirs. It was weird. Uh, it didn't seem logical to me, but that's what we were told at the time. That was in the days of Mark Kay and.
Oh.
And Dwayne, and yes.
So, kind of moving on, I'm curious, wh- what is a mini home? And it seems like it would be a small home, and why are we concerned about maximum length?
Well, we.
Mini homes.
We confuse ourselves with that, so I think we can get rid of that. Um, I think it was to encourage, um, I don't remember where it came from, to be honest with you. I don't know why it got in our notes. Um, but we have since removed that from the draft, so I apologize for the confusion of that, but, um.
But did, are we messing, are we making changes to the maximum lot coverage that's in the county ordinance?
As of right now, we are not. If you would like to and allow that, it could be done, but as of right now, we are not changing any of those coverages. So.
If I'm correct, a mini home is, is like a shed, it's about nine hundred square feet or less.
Yeah, it, it's.
And there's a lot of cities like St. Louis and all of that that have many, many house.
Yeah.
Yeah, tiny house parks for homeless people and things like that.
I mean, are we looking at doing like a tiny home community type thing or something? And I think you got thrown around at one point in the preliminary discussions, and I think you got changed on to mini homes, so I apologize.
Well, we, we met internally, uh, that was my question, too, is what, what are you, where are we looking at here, why are we looking at this? And, uh, even at the county level, a tiny home development, if it were tru- truly a tiny home development would, wouldn't go forward in our county, but a P U D.
Hmm.
Uh, because there's so many, there are so many variances that would happen.
And you have to define the size and everything.
Yeah.
Size, coverage.
It only belongs under a P U D.
Amount per acre.
Yeah.
All of that.
Right, yeah.
So.
You know, just. You know, just, just the number of units per acre, public units per acre. For the mini home, the whole, the whole idea between, as far as I understand it, I've never worked on a tiny home development, but I understand it is this kind of land conservation move, and uh, you know, you're trying to maximize the.
Yeah.
The, you know, the, yeah, so.
Some do that for bedrooms or something.
Somebody might come to you someday and say, I want to do a tiny home project in Bristol, but I see that as, that's a whole another angle.
Yeah, I think if, if we wanted to, we could leave it in as PUD to, to Ken's point, so.
I don't think you, I don't think you need to, and that, I don't think.
Because the county will probably cover that, won't it?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, it won't meet any standard.
It won't meet any standard, so.
Right.
So again, I apologize for the confusion.
No problem.
That line. Um, going through these, again, these are just kind of same bullet points for each one. And again, I think we can, can just add into one for these are not allowed in all zoning districts as opposed to have the repetition.
Okay.
Through.
Yeah.
Um, but as I said, we were just kind of going through and said, okay, we don't want this and this, and this, and then we found it out, you know, we can consolidate all these notes into a, an over encompassing.
Yeah, for all, all zoning types, yeah.
Correct. So then we get down to um, kind of buffering screening, um, we've got a couple.
Uh, don't go too fast, because that's important. There are the multi-level development with retail and commercial space.
Oh, yes.
For mixed-use living. So I think somewhere we said, well, it's right there, building height, is that the Redbird, one twenty-two East?
Yes, that is. That is the Redbird.
So if it burns down, we just wondered if we should, well, if we take out the address and just say a height.
Well, that's kind of where it's going. We, we're going to that, and that's why we've got the height. I'm not sure it's exactly.
Please don't do addresses, because a lot of times they come up to the wrong side, end of the strip road.
You guys would say it before.
Can't have a Redbird.
Uh, but we can give an actual height, and we just, we need to measure that. I think it's about twenty-eight or thirty feet tall.
Does the county have a height maximum of thirty? Maybe that's just an M-zone.
It depends on the land use.
The use and stories, I think.
It's the, the new courthouse is four stories, five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It exceeds motions.
Yeah.
When motions got forced, we can do four stories.
Yeah.
But that was grandfathered in, too.
Psychworks is four.
Even a building only costs a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to build.
Sorry, so just random thought, did you guys come up with streetscape skin requirements?
Do we come up with that, or does the county, that's what I'm wondering. I'm seeing several places here that there's Xs.
Yeah, and we've, again, we've expanded upon this a little bit, um, but we would like to look at like a cross-section for both Division Street and uh, Vestula for what you want for setbacks, fencing requirement, landscape screening.
Something we need.
Parking, and so that's some of those numbers we've got to really dive into yet.
Yep.
Um, and that's kind of one of those next steps is really getting at some of the details, but like I said, this is kind of that first draft version to say, hey, here's what we want to put in here. What are your guys' thoughts, opinions? Do you have any detail that you want to throw in, include in this as we progress?
Yeah, because I think that's, that's important to get that defined, because we, if we take Division Street, for example, Division Street South, when you go south along the west side of the road, you have all kinds of different fencing and screening and setbacks. Some are right by the road and just chain link. Some are setback thirty feet, forty feet, and they're chain linked with a privacy mesh.
Yep.
Um, that one looks nice. Some of the chain link, just, it's, it was installed in the eighties, and it looks like it was installed in the eighties.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I agree.
What happens if we remember the old ordinance I was telling you about that we had for building? You know, that was gotten rid of uh, for manufacturing buildings, you know, setback, trash storage, all of that stuff. If we, if we create an, another ordinance to cover all of that, that would incorporate into this, correct?
And so our goal is to, and when I get down to the maps at the end, um, we've got basically three overlay districts. We've got the town limits. We've got what we're calling the downtown district, which is the Vestula stretch.
Yep.
And then we've got that division corridor.
Okay.
So we could establish slightly varying uh setbacks, landscape requirements, fencing, all that for each of these.
Yeah.
Kind of corridors and overlays.
Yeah.
Um, just because we know that you got historic Vestula Street downtown, um, that's got a little bit different setback and feel to it. And we want to imitate that on Division Street, or we want to kind of modify that to have a little bit further setback than rather right-hand sidewalk.
Should we just go to those maps, or is there anything between here and there that is much different than what we've seen?
Not really.
I was thinking that um, all pretty similar.
Yeah, they're all pretty similar going through here.
Uh, you have some front setbacks. You went by the, oh, wait a minute, let's go down to signs. Uh, I think we want to insert our billboard language in there. I wasn't sure we've done that yet. I think that's higher up, yeah.
You had sent me the signed draft ordinance?
Yes, no.
Don't we have it?
The draft ordinance of the sign, so I.
No, it's not a draft, it's.
Well, the one I got, I don't know what the ordinance number is, is, why we couldn't reference it in here, and I meant.
Seven.
Yep, you just went by it.
Page seven. There's one that doesn't have, uh, says Bristol Sign Ordinance with Xs.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
We do have.
They just don't have that ordinance number to reference, I apologize.
That's what I was questioning, Xs.
I think that actual language needs to go in the overlay, so when planning staff uses this, somebody comes in for a permit, they've got the actual language there.
Yeah, for it.
Yeah.
I do, too.
Okay.
Because ours is a little bit different than the county's.
Yep.
Yes.
So that, that's one we would definitely want to identify in there.
We can get that added.
I'll send that.
There was something else that had Xs in here, too. Oh, I like the um, well, this building setback, but that would be part of it. You've got one twenty feet, two XX feet.
Yeah, and, and that's where we, we kind of want to get the corridor zeroed in, look at what, what the average kind of is in, in between these corridors.
Right.
And, and then maybe minimize that even further or expand it further for, you know, say a fence line. We want that to go back, but we want parking in the building besides to move in.
I was also wondering about this dark sky comp.
So that's, that has to go to the lighting.
Yeah, that I understand, but I don't think I've ever heard of a dark sky ordinance before.
Dark sky uh ordinance is basically an ordinance that says all lighting shall be pointing down. And have a limited foot candle, and I've got an ordinance, a draft ordinance for that.
Um, okay, but if it points down, that doesn't necessarily, it doesn't go out.
Well, it would have a cone that would go out, and it limits the angle of the cone, so you don't have. It, it's the foot candles, it's the science of the angle, the shielding. You can't have so much um, falling over a property line. And it would basically just say that any development would have to have a lighting uh evaluation done for the, for the lights going in.
Okay.
And it would have to meet the standards of that, and there's foot panel requirements, uh, color variations. Um, there's a lot of different science and technicalities in lighting these days that could be adopted in the ordinance, but um, in talking with Mike, I think we want to take it a step back and maybe not get that technical with it. So we started at that level, and I've started to pull that back and, and simplify that ordinance.
So is the county gonna do the dark sky ordinance? I mean, there's no number in here. It says as part of the town of Bristol Development Standards.
We've got a separate ordinance similar to what I've started, or what your sign ordinance is, we're going to plug that in.
For the lighting?
Yes, there's, I, like I said, I'm, I'm
Okay.
Pulling back from the dark sky, which the dark sky is very.
Page.
No section of six.
Um, section nine under.
On the screen.
Industrial.
Yeah, you got it there.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, you know, the lighting, the lighting really is is uh relative to development presence. It wouldn't affect street lighting.
Yes.
No, no, yeah, no, we, so that, um, you know, and you've heard this through some of your zoning, rezoning activities, uh, of, you know, within the last year. Uh, complaints about lighting.
Right.
Lighting pollution, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so that, the whole concept is to try to mitigate that and try to, you know, try to kind of get, get a little bit more control of it.
Yeah.
And it's, it's possible to do without, you know, becoming so restrictive, nobody's going to be willing to do it, but um, and, and you've probably heard me say this before, but the example, you have a good example of the already in the town limits at MJB Wood.
Yeah.
And they did an excellent job.
Absolutely.
Their lighting.
Yeah, they did.
And it, I mean, it's almost attractive to drive by there at night and look at their site.
Yeah.
And that's, so that's what you want for every site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Lighting is very minimal at night.
So, and, and that's kind of what the, that dark sky ordinance gets to, and it's, it's mostly down lighting, it's wall packs, it's those cones that shave down, but um, it, it had, like I said, we're pulling back from the, all those technicalities and stuff like that, but we can use the wood facility as a, as an example.
Okay.
This is for industrial or for residential halls?
This could be for everything.
So if you got an outside light that doesn't shine down, you can't have it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it. No, but the idea is to not have your light shine on somebody else's property, so if it's looking at where it goes, um, new lights basically will have a uh, a footprint and a spread for it, tell you how many foot candles it will go so far. So technically, you can look at, okay, that light's too close to your property line, you can't have that light, you gotta move it five feet over.
And, and really, Dean, I think the concept here, to have, you know, to, to, if you're gonna adopt uh, a lighting standard as a part of your overlay, it really is designed to be targeting business and manufacturing, yeah.
But you just have to say, you know, I mean, I.
I don't think there's any way.
Lights for cars front of my garage.
Yeah.
But you know, I gotta take them off, it's gonna get kind of.
You didn't, you didn't spend a lot of time, so you know, try to enforce what somebody does with a floodlight on their deck. You know, I, I think that's what.
I mean, it's, it's no different than I can, yeah, go to my window and see Floyd's lights shining in my house, and it's a block away. You know, it's just something you do, but also at night, and I know what you're saying about manufacturing. At night, I live on one twenty here. That whole area of town is like daylight.
Yeah. And that's the idea of the downward facing lights, so it's not creating that light pollution that, that broadcasts out into the night sky.
And there's, you know, a lot, a lot we can do about things that have already been, you know, implemented other than to try to encourage people to change it, but, but you can sure have something to do with, you know, with new development.
With new development.
Right.
And it, it's uh, and, and, and it won't be just the town of Bristol looking at this, so a lot of communities are considering.
Yeah.
You know, a, a couple of years ago, I think it was two years ago, when we built, uh, we designed and got approval for Indiana Transport to build a great big transport yard, yard on the south side of Hillary.
Yeah.
Um, we had to incorporate. Uh, we, you know, the planners, Bob and others that were working on the design, had to come up with a uh photometric uh designs for that, that we could go in and demonstrate to the commissioners and I don't know, thirty or forty people that didn't really want a storage yard there, that, that our lighting impact was going to be minimal. We, we also had a chicken.
Chicken bar.
Next door, that the guy said the chickens are gonna get all confused, so.
Yeah, daylight, yeah, so we studied a lot of that and went through a couple iterations, but what do you think?
And, and they have, they had actually put in some controls there so that the chickens wouldn't get, they would go inside when they were supposed to go. And so, and then, and then that telegraphed, to believe it or not, Forest River Project on the south side of Ocean, but we had to incorporate uh, motion sensors of lighting, and it was, and it's done in the zone. So, I, I think that's across the board, that's where our, our county's gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's part of the dark sky is, it, can you have motion sensors to bring the light levels up when somebody's actually there? Um.
Yeah.
And it's just one of those technicality things that we can put in there and take out as it is. And I can provide you guys with that draft version of that lighting ordinance as well.
Okay.
We didn't have any chickens from my street.
No, I was thinking it was the roosters, not the chickens.
The farmer, he held it up pretty good, though.
Yeah.
I had to actually go out there and meet with him, because I had no idea what he was talking about. I didn't realize that chickens were so sensitive.
Yeah.
I had no idea. They won't lay eggs, but they won't go inside. Won't go inside unless it's dark.
Okay. So this is the uh, South Division District, um, that we're kind of proposing. Everything along Division Street, um, basically, um, from Vestula up there, south, I think we're, we're showing south of the railroad tracks, but it may want to stop at the railroad tracks. Trying to think, where are the railroad tracks?
They're, they're actually going north of the railroad tracks.
Yeah, because there's the.
I think there's two type, types of land uses on Division Street.
Yeah, I think.
South of the railroad and north of the.
Yeah, I think we can break this down further and have like an A and B.
Um, I, I would agree, but I think we might have at least one that's north of the tracks. Well, there's, there's already one existing, here's Mancino's, and then directly across the street. The legal property that could be incorporated into that as well.
Yeah, I, I think like, what I'm, what I'm envisioning is north of the railroad seems like more of kind of a downtown district.
Yeah, retail downtown, yes.
Southern railroad is more of manufacturing.
Yeah.
You know, other than.
Could be business retail as well.
Yeah.
Now you've got, you've got Dollar General on the west side, you've got the liquor store on the east side, you've got the car wash. Um, and then who knows what's gonna happen
Yeah.
south of Bloomingdale.
Yeah, so you get, so you get, um, you know, you could get a commingling of multiple redevelopment type businesses along the way. And, you know, maybe the next Dollar General that shows up, because you know, they're about a half a mile apart in most places.
Oh, do they, did they stretch that out now?
Yeah, and uh, the next Dollar General shows up, you might, you might want to, you know, maybe put some, in, in place some controls about where they store.
Yeah.
You know, um, like this, this particular one, I don't mean anything bad about this, but um, you know, there, like some of their cardboard refuse and stuff stored in their side card. Uh, you know.
After men's words, it looks terrible.
Yeah, and.
I'm sorry.
Really, uh, you know, the kind of things you're talking about here now are the kind of things you can implement and say, we don't want that to happen again.
Right.
You know, um, you gotta put that in an enclosed area where it's not visible to the street.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, they shouldn't be doing that anyway, yes, but.
Right.
That's what the business ordinance was originally.
So you have a map that has downtown district on, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if we really have three districts. We have a downtown district that comes down to the railroad, and we have a railroad to Bloomingdale as some other district, then from Bloomingdale South.
Yeah.
Okay, it's manufacturing perhaps, uh.
Yeah.
That sort of thing.
Yeah, you're right, you're probably right, and you know, I don't think there's any reason why you can't, you know, put those zones in there and say, you know, be- because there are different land uses, so.
Though if you look out fifteen years, I, I'm suspicious that land use between the railroad tracks and Bloomingdale's gonna transition. We already see the liquor store and, um. You know, the funeral homes going there at Bloomingdale.
Yeah.
There's a new professional office taking over one of those doctor's offices, the north end. So those might become professional offices, the manufacturing that's happening on the other side might shift some.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is the input we're looking for, to say, okay, what are these zones, so that we can kind of look at those details? What are the screening requirements? What are the parking requirements, the setback requirements?
Yeah.
So I think this is very helpful, and if we can define that, like Mike said, there's a downtown that goes down to the railroad tracks. It encompasses Vestula, down Division to the railroad tracks. We have kind of an intermediate transition zone that may be mixed-use, commercial, retail, south of the tracks, and then we have that industrial further south that may have those larger sets. Larger setbacks and higher screening requirements.
We go forward with connecting Earthway and Bloomingdale, that's another just very definitive line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can, I think, further with that, not to not to sidebar too much, but.
No, not yet, except everybody seems to like the idea.
Yeah, I do.
Definitely do.
You you know, even even Vistaula Street. Uh has, you know, some different types of man use, you know, you have. The area of west of Pearl, the area of east of Pearl, oh, they're they're never gonna be exactly the same.
Right.
Well, and to the same point, we had spoken about, uh, we kind of wanted that downtown to stretch out to the library. And that may be the same thing, we may have like an east and west end that is slightly different than this actual downtown corridor.
Okay.
So that could almost be very similar in nature to what is that intermediate on Division Street. But they may be slightly different because it may be more residential or I mean.
Yeah, well, like in the area between Pearl and Division Street and Vistaula. You know, that's kind of scenario where you say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow any development that isn't have this side on the sidewalk. Right up to the sidewalk.
Right.
Like it's supposed to be in downtown, but then when you get east of Pearl, it's gonna be kind of hard to do that. Sidewalks are farther back from the road, you know, and and then. It it could be that even parts of uh South Division Street, you might wanna change how the sides presented to the street. You may say, hey, new development's gonna be up on the sidewalk, between here and here.
Yeah.
You know.
So Pearl is the next street to the. Okay.
That comes changing red at the end. The other things you're gonna have to think about too is. You know, Bristol probably gonna be continue to be a attractive location for convenience or. Development as well, you don't know.
Yeah.
Whether this one down here on the northwest corner is gonna survive, you know, completely, it's kind of like, oh, too small.
Yeah.
But they could be looking at other intersections where you might not want.
Right.
So. I mean, they're convenient. But.
Yeah.
Look at three, right?
Yeah.
We got three.
Yeah, you have three now, but you know. If you're a convenience store developer, somebody's gotta looked at the northeast corner of that same intersection that at Pearl and. And uh Vistaula.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You know.
Across the street from the rebel.
Oh, yeah, that's what it used to being.
Yeah, it's secondhand shop too.
Yeah, it is, so at some point, maybe you might have to ask yourself if you want that.
Right.
That's a hard decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially if they're serving more chicken like they're doing at that place.
Yeah.
Hard to say no to that.
They've got good food in there.
You can't serve more chicken, you gotta help the lighting.
Moving on to the next.
We somehow got stuck on chickens here.
Okay.
Yeah, this is kind of important, that urban service area as well, make sure that we're.
Yep.
Kind of the same. Okay.
So that's, that one's kind of that downtown district.
The purple?
Yeah, that purple boundary.
Okay.
As again, we can re- this as as needed, but that's kind of our first take is what we might want to. Incorporate into downtown, and maybe it only goes down to the alley or Elkhart Street, we don't. I don't think we need to do um on Saint Joseph Street. Doing for the business district on Vistaula.
My house is in downtown. Didn't notice that before.
I think that's the. Open for discussion.
Yeah, yeah, this is, like I said, how how big do we wanna go?
Yeah.
Or do we wanna tighten that up and and go from Division East or um? But that's kind of some of the input we're looking for is.
See, you have a lot with a very expensive rail site in. It's not.
Yeah.
Downtown view.
Yeah.
But certainly hope somebody utilizes that at some point.
This one right here?
Yeah.
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 You know, pipe yard.
Well, doesn't sound like it's gonna happen anytime soon.
Apparently not.
Who owns?
Yeah.
Kimby Kim.
Oh.
Yeah. That might be gone, no, forget it. Uh, we did talk though about moving that, so I I think what I'm hearing is let's narrow that up just a bit. And maybe extend it down to the railroad tracks on uh.
From Division.
Yeah.
I think so. That seems like a a logical idea to extend your downtown just on those main corridor streets.
So bring this, bring this in.
No, I I kind of like going clear out the library, don't you?
No, Maple Street would be better.
What's that?
Just to Maple Street.
Just to Maple, you think?
Why? Because east of east of Maple, you got.
Because if you go to library.
I'm already in it myself, so.
I don't care, I'm just saying.
I know you don't care.
I almost wondered.
Are you afraid of hel- being held to a standard, Dean?
No, I just figured I fixed that place up pretty good since I moved in there.
Had a bit of residential from Ponderosa going east, there's one one store out there, two maybe.
Now you got. Back to Ponderosa.
Got Wandermat and um.
Yeah.
I'd have to drive it.
Can always expand it later if you choose.
Okay, well, we can look at refining.
That far south.
Take another.
What's that?
Do we wanna go that far south or down to Saint Joe Street?
Yeah, I was suggesting that we move that up to Elkhart maybe.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Whatever happened to the wacky showing on the, on the uh storage yard there in the trade?
It's still s-.
Still wacky?
Wacky. W one.
Why, why would we move it up to Elkhart when we have residential behind it, south of there?
We're looking at uh a downtown district that what do we want, those businesses and retails areas, I think that's what we're looking at.
It's a no. This is all or overlay district.
Okay, cause I was gonna say, a lot of this that you've got on there is downtown is residential.
Residential.
Right, right, agreed, and I and that's what we're saying, we think we can take the residential out of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And make it more of just the main road corridors of Vistaula and Division.
Okay.
And the business over. The retail route, if you will.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and then the next one is the urban services boundary. Hey, can you speak more to this one?
Yeah, so there's a couple, couple things that they kept that the town is entitled to. You know, recognize and and then also have the world recognize and that. So we, a couple of different things, the urban service boundary is is typically what you're. What you have a capability to serve within, you know, reasonable proximity to your municipal services like sewer and water. And uh and there's, you know, a lot of times communities are reaching way. Way outside of their, you know, their corporate boundary to provide uh services. Um you know, either through an interlocal agreement or direct or as a direct customer base. So uh we're drawing this line because we, you know, we have some uh involvement in uh planning of. Your municipal works and so we kind of know what their capabilities are. Um, the the line that we have drawn on the on the north side and east side and south side. Is probably re- you know, reasonable, we probably could pull them in a little bit to kind of omit some of the land that we don't think is gonna necessarily. Develop um and uh and then the area, one of the areas that concerns me a little bit is that northwest quadrant of that. Urban services area that really reaching out, um you know, we have. Uh municipal services, sewer and water, you know, pretty much all the way out to kind of Route twenty one, we're gonna have.
Yeah.
And I would say, you know, reaching another half a mile to the west is doable.
Yeah.
Um, but you could decide, the the thing about adopting urban services boundary, you're kind of letting the world know that you that you are willing. You're not committing and you only commit, you know, by either by uh agreement. Or by, you know, conducting an annexation or otherwise.
Yeah.
And uh but what this means though, uh as far as I'm concerned. If you adopt this and you put this and you provide this to the county planning commission. They get a residential subdivision anywhere within your urban sub-service area that wants to develop. They gotta say, you gotta go talk to Bristol first to see if you are uh eligible or can be eligible. For uh remote service for municipal utilities, even though that's not something we would typically recommend you do. Uh you wanna have the ability to at least review it.
Yeah.
And uh, you know. As an example, you could have a uh significant technology center. Um development that's not gonna be immediately um eligible for annexation that you wanna have some input on. Or maybe even realize some benefit from.
Yeah.
So in that case, you'd say, well, we we'd wanna have a ability to turn that down.
Yeah.
So. Um, so this is, you know, these boundary lines that we've drawn on here are probably. Uh. Maybe a little ambitious in a couple of locations, but doable in others. Like, say for instance, um since we're only talking amongst us group here. At some point in time, it's likely that the manufactured home community, uh kind of Route nineteen, uh state Route one twenty. Will outlive their uh wastewater treatment facility and potentially their water supply. Um, not something that you particularly would have a whole lot of interest in annexing, but. You know, what is there in there a thousand possible units that could. Become a a bulk customer by contract.
Yeah.
Um, that would be something that you'd wanna look at very carefully before you said no.
Yeah.
Because it 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 could be, uh and again, certain scenario like that, uh customer by contract as a bulk user. Your guys aren't running out there to clean manholes or turn wrenches, you're giving them a modified service under contract.
Yeah.
And um and then the only thing that Kathy has to do, the only thing the town has to do is open an envelope and deposit a check.
Yeah.
So that's something you'd wanna have the ability to say, no, we're not interested, or we might be.
Yeah.
So, putting a uh line on paper. So if they, let's say that that, and I'm just throwing out scenarios, if that manufactured home community. Uh if they were in a scenario where they did outlive their wastewater treatment facility and they had to go to. The uh Department of Environmental Management and request a new permit. Or a construction permit to rebuild their facility and then therefore continue their. Uh surface water discharge to the creek there.
Yeah.
Um, they would have to come to you and ask, can you provide service? And you would have to turn them down before they.
Yeah.
I have two questions. What are those three dots in the middle of the town town limit?
Oh, it must be.
Does that mean they're not downtown properties?
That is correct.
Well, who are, what are they?
They're not ones. Well, the smallest one is uh just south where Zimmerman's uh. Who owns that?
That's. That's a private residence.
Yeah, residence.
That's on the south side, it's. On the south side of the old Hoosier Transport Lot.
Bill's got Billy's.
But that's not part of the town?
No, it's not.
Okay, what about the one with the square?
The square? That's great, Bailey's House.
Oh, really?
Yep.
And what about the other one?
That is, the that's the brown farm.
We call it the old shaky.
Oh, that's the brown, okay, now, okay, now I understand the map.
That's the one that's on the balm, huh, correct?
Correct.
That's the one I understand now because I didn't actually see how far down into south the line went. I got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Now, the other question, what was the, oh, do we have a um an outline like the red one right now? Of where we have current utility given?
We do, yeah.
Is that possible to give an email?
Yeah, we could actually, we could actually populate the G I S with every property that's served by.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could get maybe an outline of what we actually service now, because some of it's gonna go outside of the red line, right?
Yeah, all all we need to do is is get the address.
I'm just curious.
And we can.
Service anyone outside or town right now?
No.
Everyone inside.
No, that's a good practice, that's that's uh that's smart, there's only a couple reasons why you would do it. And it would have to be where it didn't cost you anything and.
Right.
Got benefit from it.
Okay, thank you.
And then you would still have an agreement for, you know, annexation to occur when it was appropriate, so.
Great, thank you.
There's a lot of communities that didn't follow that, that regret. And I I don't know if you noticed or not, but that urban service area reaches quite ways above beyond the toll road.
Yeah, it does.
And and the reason for that is that when we did the planning work for the utility extensions in Oracle Long State Route fifteen there. So specifically related to the Lakota Development Project.
Yeah.
Uh, we built the capacity into the sewer and water up there to be able to reach under the toll road and serve those areas. And assuming they're dry industry, you know, similar to what you currently have, uh you should be able to.
Shouldn't affect that.
Alright, treatment plan.
And again, what you're also doing is you're putting it on notice that don't go up there and build a factory, don't think you're gonna. Get out and connect into the town's facilities or annex.
Yeah.
You know, so. Cause it probably will, that pressure will happen sooner or later.
Yeah. Yeah, more likely.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, if you went to the next page, I think you started to scroll through. Um. That's kind of the start to one of the lighting renditions we've done. And you can see, starting with A there, all exterior lighting should be fully shielded or filtered opaque. Um, light generated, the light source is directed downward and not outward horizontally, so it fitted so that it. So fitted that no portion of the light source is visible when the light fixture is viewed from the property line. Um, so there's a lot of terminology there and how it's worded. Um. No exterior lighting shall illuminate any public, private road, public waterway, public beach, conservation, even public right of way. Um, luminary effects spill over otherwise create nuisance on adjoining property. No flashing lasers, searchlights, strobe tracing, pulsating neon. Um, so this is just some of the stuff that can get included into these lighting ordinances, um. Pretty simple, but how much and how much detail do you wanna go into?
That one, that F one probably needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, it'll be, we'll be the first culprit there.
Yeah, yeah, you want people to use that stuff.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
But and and there's uh ways that that, like I said, that those could be on timers. Um, they could be on motion sensors.
Yeah.
To help facilitate some of that spill of the light pollution so that they're not on all the time.
Yeah.
So, but you know, it doesn't say anything about pickleball courts.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
Just tennis. No recreational court, including tennis courts, basketball courts or sports courts.
Well.
Including, okay, you can call them racket.
Well, I don't know, is is pickleball technically a sport?
Yes.
Oh, my.
From what I hear, it's an obsession.
Call them racket courts, because both of them use racket things, sort of.
Pickleballs take.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not supposed to.
By the way. Might be an issue with. Landscape lighting.
Yeah, I I think this needs some adjustment.
Yeah.
Say, go through, go through your subdivision, there're gonna be a lot of them put out.
So, so what I've done is I've I've actually gone through that dark sky ordinance one and simplified that into more of a format of this. Since this level.
So did you bring, did you bring revised copy?
I did, and I can actually.
I don't even know whether I can add ultimate, I think you're good, good comments, you go back. And revise that and provide another uh view. And revise that and provide another view.
From a process and procedure standpoint. We've got, you know, like when we look at the the text of of the the example or dark sky ordinance. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what's, what would be contemplated is the. The overlay district and all of its standards would be defined and set, the town would adopt it by ordinance. And then that would go on to uh the planning commission and the county then incorporate into unified development ordinance. So the town wouldn't need to adopt a standalone dark sky ordinance.
We would put it into, as we're talking about putting the existing sign elements in, we're gonna slot that in there. This is just, it's a draft version of what we're, the direction we're going. So, yes, that is correct.
Although I wouldn't be surprised to see Elkhart County make a move on lighting. In the near future, because it's been such a topic.
So I think the next pages are that dark sky ordinance.
This is a complicated one, but it did, oh no, this is.
This, that's my topic.
It's our sewer plan.
Well, I guess the the next one of Mike's, is there any questions you guys have for me or and we can?
Did we talk about, did we talk about, so what we, what we looked at is the area of urban service area, right? So it it would be typical for a community to also consider area to formalize their very urban influence. And that is uh and Alex may be aware of this, you know, typically it's a two mile. Expansion of the town's limits where the town would potentially have the ability to provide input on land use matters and other things. You know, like uh as an example, you could have an area that. You know, somebody wanted to develop a business park remotely. And if it was within that area, you could say, not without us. You know, uh or you could say, we object, that's that can't happen. And there's plenty of examples in Elkhart County where the uh municipality didn't exercise that right. And they became, came, got to a point where they read it. So that's uh, I think there is a, there is, there is uh in some cases. Um town will take a step to formalize that as part of their planning activity, you can decide to do that or not to do that.
If anybody's interested, I do have a map on paper that we can look at afterwards, see that two mile buffer. And we can even draw boundaries on these other ones and discuss. Uh but I do have some maps to kind of talk about if anybody's interested.
Get those to Mike and then he can review them and let us know. But no, good, good content. Thank you for all the work you did on this. Appreciate it. I know there's some obviously revisions to work on, but I'm I'm sure, I'm confident we'll get there.
No, I appreciate the uh input, um we'll take that note and continue forward.
Mike, what else do you have? They'll slide down past the water sewer ordinance, it's just there for reference. I've got a spreadsheet. So I'm suggesting, well, in fact, I was expecting one or two of you to call because you've got complaints, keep going down. About our new connection fees, which are called. Utility pay, and so I did a comparison between Goshen's. Elkhart and Bristol, it's, keep going, we'll get to a spreadsheet. There it is. So um since she's a Bravo for an example, and I'm fairly sure I've got this right, but. Before I wanna, I wanna go back one step, cause Jill, you did tell me the town has not charged a connection fee for sewer, is that correct? But we have charged one for sewer connection? Okay, like you said, we didn't. Because I found an ordinance said we should be, but anyway. All right, so uh. So we modified that and and we are pretty expensive right now compared. And I believe Middlebury's higher than us, but Mary hasn't got me her information yet. So Bravo, uh we're extending water sewer out to that area, they're paying for the sewer, so we. I'm assuming we're not gonna charge them the twenty one thousand dollars to connect, cause they built the line out there, but we're also adding water. So if they were a new company and they were just tapping in, we would be charging them ninety to almost ninety three thousand dollars to connect to water and sewer. Uh in Elkhart City, it would cost them fifty five thousand, in Goshen it would cost them just twelve thousand. So we're.
So it's just, so what what's, what did it get for their ninety two thousand dollars? What I mean, exactly what did it get?
Well, it's their buying, it's their development, explain to them, explain to them why this is so important, we.
Part of it, part of it is um. When we were going through the pre-planning work for the water and and the water improvement specifically. Sewer, sewer as well, I mean, it's sewer had had has similar concern. What we found is that Bristol didn't have a system development. And most communities do, the the system development charge is is developed in direct relationship to. The uh kind of proportionate costs or the proportionate capital costs per customer. So uh in the case of Baker Tilly's analysis, they use, you know, the size of the service lead. Um and um and they're basically saying, all of the other customers in the town. Have for multiple years supported the system and paid the cost of operations and in a lot of cases even capital of cost. And currently you're in the process of paying for a pretty dramatic capital costs. And uh the problem that that you would have in most cases, and I think the reason why you're seeing this. Being significant for an eight inch is because the. I think the way Baker Tilly looked at it, or the way I would look at it is. The need for the capital improvement in the project wasn't being driven by residential users. Right, being driven by commercial users like Bravo Trailer. And uh and you know, there might be, you know, when it comes to just sheer numbers, there's way more residential. Users than there is commercial users, but commercial users are completely outpacing the need for your capital investment in the utility. So it only makes sense, and this is the way that Baker Tilly looked at it, and they could probably explain it better than I, but. The way they looked at it, when we were sitting here talking about this, and we said, it's not fair to the resident. Or to even a resident developer to put that all on on them, because they're not gonna be the reason for the significant investment. So like the million gallon storage tank, does that anything, I mean, has something to do with fighting fire in residential. Fire, but it really is designed to accommodate the fire protection needs of the millions of square feet they now have. So the the, you know, so I think Baker Tilly is saying, well, new development, new customers, they got paid away. And this is the, this is the multiplier.
Well, so I have a different take on that, and so you can criticize me if I if I'm way wrong. Get there, but I just also wanted to say that Elkhart City has a development charter fee, but they bake it into their, what do they call their tap fee? So it's just a matter of terminology. And I will also say that Dustin Sailor was very interested to see our new rates, so. Some businesses in Goshen may say, what did that Yoder do to us? So here's my problem with this, is that we are already charging businesses, we adjusted our water rates. Pay off the bond that's paying for this new development right now. It seems like now we're double dipping, because we're trying to pay for the next one.
One of the things that you probably wanna get Baker Tilly to to uh clarify for you. Is where does that ninety two thousand dollars go to, or about sixty four thousand eight hundred?
Well, I asked that question today, and it's just going right into the water sewer fund rate. It's not, there's not a cume fund or sinking fund established apparently.
So the que- the question specifically, I'm I'm worried, I'm concerned about, is it used, being used for debt service on SRF loan? Okay, so we need to confirm.
But I I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, that the water, the water usage and the sewer usage. Are are the only two calculations we're using for the debt service, correct?
That that would be my guess.
We're not, we're not calculating the the sixty four thousand dollars and the sixty four hundred dollars for the debt service. Because we don't know, we we can't do that, because we don't know how many people are gonna connect. That's, that would be a stab in the dark.
So, so they, so they use this, you know, equation to arrive at this number. And you're right, there's no way that you would expect to collect the system development charge and apply it to debt, other than pay the debt off early. But but to handle debt service on a normal basis, it can't be used for that, cause you'd never know when you were gonna get it.
So why don't we only do two and eight inch lines? We don't do six inch lines?
Yeah, we do, that's just, that's what they're asking for.
Fire protection.
Yeah, the eight inch is fire protection.
I'll just be really, just really blunt, I think that ninety two thousand dollars is just insane.
That's what we're charging now for that.
That's just, that's, that's crazy, and that's just, and and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's just a connect to our line, right?
Yeah, that's.
It's nothing more than tapping into our line.
Basically, and and I, you know, they would have to, I, they would have to explain to me how they got to the number. But my guess is, it basically is a proportion, proportion, a proportion against the capital cost of the project for connection. And it has something, and again, how they did it, how they got to that number for an eight inch service, I really.
So who actually, who actually taps into our line? Do our guys do it?
No, uh not for an eight inch. They, they would oversee it, of course. In the case of Bravo, we're gonna, we're gonna place that T for for them. When we build that water.
So all we would do is provide like the pit and the center, that's what our guys do.
For sixty four thousand dollars.
So we, we really wouldn't do a whole lot, we don't have, we don't have a lot of. We don't have a lot of capital cost for the town of Bristol.
Correct, it's not for the labor, it's for the availability.
I mean, that's. If anybody disagrees with me, please let me know, but I just, I think that's, I think that's insane, I think my personal opinion is. We should have a set fee for a two inch, a six inch, an eight inch, whatever. And I don't really think it should be over ten thousand dollars.
So one thing, one thing.
On on commercial.
If if you're gonna make a change, cause this is adopted in your ordinance. So um. You know, I and and Alex would have to tell you how they get relief from that outside of the change in the ordinance or. Some some middle they'd have to make or requests they'd have to make for you to.
We haven't done very many yet.
One thing, one thing I would.
That's just stupid.
One thing I would encourage you to consider though, so in the case of Bravo Trailers. It just happens to be that we're gonna be going, you know, a very important way to the town's water system up there. We can build that T and put that valve in for very low cost. Uh offices of that project. If we went by them and they said, we don't watch the water, and then a year later said, no, I guess we do watch. Then um when you, when you make a revision to this ordinance, which you would probably have to do. Cause you'd have to either reduce it or eliminate or whatever. You'd wanna say something like, this minimum amount plus donut cost to the town. Because in that scenario. Uh like for an eight inch tap on a twelve inch line or a ten inch line or whatever it is that we're building up there. That would have to be a wet tap. And that's probably a twelve or fifteen thousand dollar bill that if they're requesting it. I don't know if the town would be.
No, they pay for it, in our case.
They pay for that.
Good, so that's already in there.
So if Goshen takes that approach of a kind of fixed cost, and I think Dustin's gonna. Dustin would say they're a little too low.
We would be doing average of locals, because I mean, it's just bottom everybody out, we're already in demand area with limited space.
Yeah, of course. Elkhart, it's kind of interesting, Elkhart has more capacity, lower rates generally, and. I don't know, that just seemed kind of expensive, but that's, and that's linear footage, so there's eight hundred and thirty one linear feet. I would feel fair charging them sixty dollars a foot, because I've got a big lot that store trailers on. That's just my address, so um I didn't like their methodology. If you go down to the residential, as we just kind of set with this other, I pulled up an example here, this is what I thought. You guys would say something about. Now, that's the one inch line, if you only take a three quarter inch line, which I don't know, into your home, do you want a one inch or three quarter?
I don't want a one inch.
Too much water?
I want a two.
You want two? Well, you just doubled.
No, I I I would prefer a one inch line than three quarters.
Well, that's sort of my thinking too, but seventy three hundred bucks, does that sound okay to you guys? Or higher than others?
Well, the bad part about it is it's seventy three hundred to us, then you gotta pay a contractor another three, four thousand to put it in.
We don't.
Spending ten thousand dollars getting water and sewer.
I think to to try and foster residential growth, cause there's not too many. Residential properties in town that don't already have water and sewer.
Right, it's all new residential.
It'll all be new residential, I I think that's a deterrent. What's that?
That's your truth.
We don't have water.
My mother paid seventy five dollars to get hers hooked up back in.
I, I just don't think it's a. Eighteen forty seven?
No, nineteen.
I said, yeah, I don't, don't, we need to talk to Baker Tilly, figure out how they got to these.
That's crazy.
And just to make sure we're not tripping back on some debt service calculations that they had.
Well, reminiscing back to the last meeting, maybe somebody fat fingered it.
Should sewer development, why is that they not paying?
Uh because they're building the sewer line up, they're paying for that to their place.
I think it, I think it's more than appropriate for the town to have a system development. Ever, you know, it's, it's, it's. Really, the system development charge is just that. It really, um when we started like the water project and and the sewer project. The town really, I mean, they, that their uh sinking fund was mostly for repairs and. You know, not for capital projects, so to speak, and so when we, I remember having a deep dialogue. Well, do you have a system development charge? Not really, and the recommendation is you should have. But I don't know, uh I would wanna ask them, how do you, how they got that number? Cause it does seem like there's an extra zero or something.
And they are flat rates, Jeff, you commented, if you go back a few pages, you'll see what the actual ordinance, what the rates are, and it's all by meter size, right? There's your sewer.
An eight inch sewer line, which.
So that would be somebody develop, doing a development where they're gonna have multiple units connected to it, so.
What's funny, the difference between the two, two inch and the eight inches, ten times more, that that doesn't make much sense. Make any sense.
We can reduce it.
Would, rather than dropping it, would it make sense to keep it, use it, like somebody, a developer comes in, we want assistance with this, and we can just be like, well, what if we just drop this back? That we're gonna do anyways.
Well, turn it into a uh.
Yeah, I mean, rather than, when they change your ordinance, just be like, well, maybe we can help you here.
Uh we'd have to forget that, the ordinance.
I mean, there's, your your two avenues are, your two avenues are, would be to um amend those numbers. Uh to reduce them, I mean, certainly it would need to be with Baker Tilly's input to make sure that um that we're correct, that this is going to debt service. And then, cause it's not funding a a cume fund, it's not going anyplace else, um and that it's.
Um, and that it's, it wouldn't otherwise be something that SRF is expecting to come in, I you know, I can't imagine. That any SRF debt service would contemplate even. Irregular uh connection fees being paid.
It, I would agree, I don't see, I don't see how they would.
Because we can't predict what they're gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could be, I wonder, I wonder if uh, you know, Victor Tilly typically. You know, works with the town to do like a five year capital plan. And a lot of times those capital plans wouldn't necessarily be funded by debt, they'd be funded by. Cume, uh, you know, accumulation of of, and it could be that they they said, well, you know. Maybe they did some trending analysis and 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 applied a map multiplier or something, I don't know, but I think it's worth asking.
Yeah.
Just need to know where they came by it.
Sure, yeah, well, and too, I mean, if it, it doesn't sound like it's been the town's practice, but it, I suppose it could be the town's practice to be the installer of that connection. So to the extent that it was covering that cost.
Right.
That would seem to make a little more sense, but the point's well taken, if you get a residential user that has a seven thousand dollar sewer water connection. And then you pay a contractor on top of it, that seems to. Uh, well, it's, it's.
Yeah.
The equity and fairness there is for the council to determine, but um the alternative to this, Greg. I suppose you could, you could bake into this, um, maybe not, wouldn't call it a variance procedure, but an opportunity for someone to.
An economic incentive.
Correct, procedure.
Okay.
You know, always can be a slippery slope, we talked about this with with horses, with chickens. Whatever the case may be, as far as, you know, you may have everyone and their mother wants to come and ask for reprieve for a connection fee. But otherwise, I don't think the uh, my concern will always be that I don't, the ordinance doesn't provide the council that type of. Immediate discretion to say, no, we're not gonna charge this user.
Right.
We don't.
We're required, yeah.
We're meeting with Bravo tomorrow, I'm assuming that this is the the reason.
I'll come with my shovel, the connection for that.
So we've, we've done three. If we would decide to make some changes, uh, would it be appropriate for us to do a refund to the three people that? Had to live up that. Did this, would that be your intent? I can tell Bravo that this is what it is right now. But the town's looking at it, if we make a reduction, you'll get a refund, is that how you wanna handle it? Is that appropriate?
It would almost, we would almost have to go back to. May first, twenty twenty four, and anybody who paid. A connection fee since then.
Well, I think that's just three.
So I, you know, what did legal counsel on this, because. If if we said, okay, you paid a connection fee last year in October. We're gonna give you a refund, because we're gonna change the rate. Now, what happens when somebody comes back, says, oh, I connected seven years ago, and I paid that amount? Where's my refund? But do we go back to, can can we go back legally, can we go back to? The effectiveness date of this ordinance right here? To say, anything that's happened since this date, which is gonna be May first of twenty twenty four. Anything that's happened since that date, you are eligible for a refund. Based on the new rate.
Maybe you can't, I mean, maybe it's just.
We didn't have system development charges till this ordinance, so the rest of the ordinance had these, so it was totally different. Category and way less, we, it was only nine hundred dollars back then.
I I remember distinctly having a conversation with Baker Tilly saying. They really need to do something. Because everyone.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not not, if for no other reason, but to give you another opportunity to fund your sinking, you know, to provide. Dollars to your sinking. Because you gotta be able, you don't wanna go borrow money every time you gotta fix.
Right.
Right.
So it's to that point, sewer and water rates by statute. Can be a little sticky, because there is, eh, you know, from the municipal utility standpoint. Statute doesn't provide you to make a bunch of money off of it, it's essentially to be able to provide for the service.
Cover your costs.
Cover your costs, and it's not supposed to be a moneymaker for the town, right, so from. So that's, that's kind of the general consideration, but then to your question on. The the refund and and the effective date of the ordinance. Um, so I keeping that in mind, that it it can be a sticky wicket um under statute. And also making sure that it doesn't run foul of whatever the debt service consideration may be with the SRF bonds. Yeah, I mean, keeping in mind that the rate here isn't wrongful, right, we're not having the discussion that this is an illegal rate, or that this is. Um, this was done in a way to to punish somebody, and it shouldn't have been done this way, or that's not what's being considered here, it's simply a. The numbers that came out may have been too high from the start, there are some folks that may have been affected by the numbers that were too high. And as we're regulating that down to market levels, here are the three people that are affected.
Yeah.
So if those other boxes can be checked, if it, one, if statute would permit it. Which we'd have to ensure, I'm pretty sure it does, but to be sure, and it doesn't run afoul of the SRF um bonds. Then, you know, I'm building in a procedure to allow somebody to come for you, uh, under very specific parameters. Probably not um inappropriate.
Okay.
So to the extent you wanted to consider that.
Okay.
All right, why don't uh um. I'll reach out to Baker Tilly.
Okay.
Set up, uh, they'll be joining us Thursday night for uh some sort of a tip related thing.
Okay.
They probably would not wanna talk about this Thursday night, but I'll also have a report back from Bravo, see what their concerns blah are.
Yeah.
Okay, so Alex will do his research, we'll get Baker Tilly to help us. We'll meet with them at the next earliest opportunity, have them present.
Okay.
All right.
Is that it?
That is.
Okay.
Although I did, I didn't remember briefly that connection between Earthway and uh. What we deal.
Yeah.
JPR actually has that on paper already, so that was a previous plan.
Kathy, Kathy Dean.
Yeah, so we are, we may have a drawing that's almost close enough that we can actually start considering buying right.
We actually computed acreage, so that can.
Okay, good.
So we got. Back when old Bruce Bruce was still there, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the only first start problem. Remember that uh, the deal kind of fell apart with the owner of. His dogs, because. He said, you gotta pay me and you gotta tear down the Bruce Bruce.
Yeah.
And he said, where did we come to that?
He was not a happy camper.
Yeah, he was kind of mad. Originally, we thought we had a deal.
Okay.
All right, it's all like that.
All right. Uh, nothing from Kathy, Alex handing tonight, I think for me, okay. Uh, questions about upcoming agenda items, nothing there. Comments or questions, nothing there, so motion to adjourn?
Yep. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, I'll motion my guys, second maybe, and all in favor.
Hi, hi.